Good evening. This is the December 13th, 2018, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Tanya Hickok.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Ken Ayers.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Thank you.
So, we have a quorum, and we don't have a short board. So, moving on with the agenda. Next item is minutes. We have minutes for October the 11th, 2018. May I have a positive motion for approval, please?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dale. Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved, and we'll move on to the special order of business. Are there any disclosures this evening? Ms. Hickok.
In case 2018-0099, I work for The Boote Company, which is the project manager for the Canyon Road project for the municipality, and so I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Do you have any financial?
No.
Personal?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion that would direct Ms. Hickok to participate, please? Ms. Iker.
I would move to direct Ms. Hickok to participate in case number 2018-0099.
And Mr. Smythe, seconds. Is there any objection to her participation? Seeing none, you are directed to participate.
Thank you.
Welcome. Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of all matters before the board that do not require a public hearing. It's approved by motion without debate. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, we have two items. We have Resolution 2018-005 and Resolution 2018-006. Have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Iker moves?
Move to approve.
Mr. Ayers, seconds. Is there any? Does anyone not want the consent agenda approved? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved, and we'll move on down the agenda. No appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, and we're on to public hearings. The first case is case 2018-0105. The petitioner is Ron Jovanovic. Is he in here? Thank you. Okay. We run these meetings according to the code, Regulation 2112-520, and the procedure is, the Chair will introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. Okay, so the case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. Case number 2018-0105, Ron Jovanovic. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance, and board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the Chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. Board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes; individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the Secretary. The display in the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed and then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. Persons who testify may be questioned by the board, the staff, and the applicant, and you may only testify once. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have a right of rebuttal. Then the Chair will close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. An action by the board shall require the favorable -- this is code, 2112-230B. Action by the board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board. The fully constituted board shall include all members of the board, including vacancies, and this is important because we're a nine-member board, and there's only six of us. We're all here, but there's only six of us, not excused for conflict of interest, and no one has been excused. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met. Also, according to code, every decision by the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. Okay, so, on we go. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Planning Department mailed 92 public hearing notices, and three public comments were received. They were all in support of granting this variance. No comments were received from the Community Council, and the applicant provided eight letters of support from the neighbors, including the most affected neighbor. The public comments are on page 46 of your packet. The letters of support from the neighbors are on page 23 of your packet.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, the staff will present the case, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance for a house to encroach nine feet into a required 25-foot side yard setback in CER 6 District. In 1999, Mr. Jovanovic purchased this lot with the House Foundation already built. The onsite septic system and the water line for the private well were already also installed. The previous owner received a permit approval from the Building Safety Division for the onsite septic system and a private well, but not construction of the House Foundation. The foundation encroaches 7.8 feet into the side setback. Mr. Jovanovic designed a house based on the existing foundation. He discovered the encroachment this summer when he applied for a land use permit to complete the house on that existing foundation. You can see pictures of that foundation on pages 20 to 22. Mr. Jovanovic proposes to reduce the House Foundation encroachment by 1.3 feet, from 7.8 feet to 6.5. He will do this by removing a bump out in the foundation. However, the new house design will have a 2.5-foot roof eave, which adds to the 6.5-foot encroachment for a total of nine feet of encroachment. While two feet of roof eaves are normally allowed to encroach into a setback, that wouldn't be applicable here because it's already encroaching. An as-built can be found on page seven of your packet. In regards to standard number, the approval criteria A, the standard is met. The lot is located on the edge of the municipality, and while a majority of the lots in this area are affected by steep topography, this lot is one of the worst. It's encovered by approximately 40% slopes. Property slopes downhill to the east. The lot is substantially lower than Birdsong Drive. The topography varies greatly from north to south and east to west. There's a driveway that's already cut in that runs diagonal from Birdsong Drive because of the slope of the lot. Because of the steep grade of the land, it creates an extraordinary physical circumstance of the subject property. Furthermore, public water and sewer are not available to the property. Onsite septic system is already installed on the south side of the foundation, and a water line is approved for -- or installed for a private well to be located on the front of the property, close to the front property line. The documentation for those approvals is on page 31 of your packet. Approval criteria B, the standard is met. Although the House Foundation was built without a permit by the previous owner, it was placed in the best location on the lot, given the steep topography and the other physical constraints. If the House Foundation were not present, then Mr. Jovanovic would likely need to request a variance in order to build a house on the foundation on this property. Resulting encroachment in this case is nine feet, or 36% encroachment, into that side setback. Approval criteria C, the standard is met. This is a steep lot, slope downhill from the road, and the need for the variance is a result of physical constraints of the land. Approval criteria D, the standard is met. There's no structure separation violations. Drainage and runoff are not issues, and there have been no neighbors who have objected to this variance request. Approval criteria E, the standard is met. This is a dimensional variance. It's not a use variance. Approval criteria F, the standard is met. There's no identified health or safety issues with this variance in the property. Approval criteria G is not applicable because it's not related to ADA accessibility. Approval criteria H is substantially met. The 25-foot setback would force the house to be closer to the center of the lot, which is affected by topography. The proposed house is modest size, and the requested variance is the minimum variance that will allow the house to be built on the existing foundation. It would be more difficult for the owner to find suitable location elsewhere on the lot, since this is affected by topography, and it already has approved locations for onsite septic system and two Leach Field locations and the private well. You can see a topo map on page 17 of your packet. The department finds the approval criteria is substantially met and recommends approval subject to conditions 1 and 2 on page 6 of your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff? No. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? No, he indicates not. Then will the applicant please come forward, state, and spell your name for the record?
My name is Ron Jovanovic, J-O-V-A-N-O-V-I-C-H, and I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to present my case. You've all had the packet, so it pretty much is self-explanatory. However, I'll be short here. 20 years ago, my wife and I, we saw this property in the South Fork Valley. We've always liked that valley, and we saw the "for sale" sign, and we said, hey, this is kind of interesting. It already had a foundation, a septic, and water line in. It was pretty steep, as it says, but we said we might be able to make it work. We wouldn't have much of a yard, but 20 years, we were going to retire, and we didn't really want to be stuck with a yard. We wanted to be traveling. So, we got ahold of the realtor to get what information we could, get all the particulars, and we thought we did.
Mr. Jovanovic, could you pull the mic down just a little bit closer to you?
Sure.
It's not recording as it should.
How's that? Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. That's what happens when you're short. But, so, obviously, we didn't get all the information, and there was never anything mentioned about any encroachment on any of the property. And it wasn't obvious because it's quite dense wooded there, and the home that is on the property that's being encroached is over 200 feet away that you can't see because there's too much, you know, it's all forested there. So, it wasn't obviously an issue then, and, like I said, we didn't hear anything from the realtor about it. So, we went ahead. We purchased it and bought title insurance and figured, you know, it was a pretty good situation, that it would be paid off when it come time, 20 years later, that we could start to build. So, here we are, 20 years later, and went to get our land use permit, and lo and behold, we were surprised to find that we're encroaching. So, obviously, here I am. That about sums it up, really.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Nobody? Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jovanovic. Okay, so, the public hearing is now open, and is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2018-0105? Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing none, the staff has time for rebuttal. Don't know what you're going to rebut, but there you go.
I have no other comments.
And the applicant?
What else to say about it?
Okay. So, we will close the public hearing, and the matter now rests with the board. Can I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale.
In the case of case number 2018-0105, I move to approve the variance. Subject to staff recommendations on page 5 and 6.
May I second?
And Ms. Iker, seconds. Would you speak to your motion, Mr. Hale?
I intend to support my motion. For the findings, in finding A, we're looking for exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. It's evident that most of the slopes are non-buildable. It'd be super hard to build on this. It looks to me like the only location on the lot that's reasonable is where the foundation actually is. So, I think A is substantially met. B speaks to exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner. I certainly think that slopes like that are difficult to develop at best. If the foundation wasn't there, likely it would have to go there if you were going to build on the lot at all. So, I think it does have an undue hardship associated with that. So, I think that B is also substantially met. C, the hardship is not self-imposed. The current owner did not put the foundation there. He's actually offered to reduce the encroachment if he can, so I think that good faith goes a long way. And, again, he didn't do it, but he's willing to work with, to make it as right as possible. So, I think that C is also met. D speaks to adversely affecting the adjacent property owners. They're large lots. I mean, you can hardly see your neighbors, so I don't think that they're going to affect their neighbors at all based on that, and especially in light of the fact that it's a pretty small building, anyway. So, I believe standard D is also met. E is the zoning. Does not change the character of the zoning, and this is dimensional. It's not a zoning change, so it doesn't change the character of the zoning. So, that standard's met. F, really, doesn't apply. Doesn't adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the people, so that standard is met. G is Americans with Disabilities Act, and it's not related to the ADA at all, so that one's met. And H, finally, is the, it is the minimum variance that'll make it possible to use the land reasonably like all the neighbors, so I think that that is also substantially met.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Ms. Iker?
Thank you, through the Chair. I concur with Board Member Hale's comments and only have one addition to standard D. I just want to note the several non-objection letters that we received in the packet and several letters of support from all of, it looks like, the surrounding neighbors to the owner's property, and that is also persuasive in the findings.
Does anyone else have any discussion that they'd like to? Seeing none, does anybody have any objection? If not, then the motion passes, and the variance is granted. Okay, the next case on the agenda is an appeal, which has different procedures, so I'm going to go through those. Chair shall introduce the appeal and explain the procedure to be followed, okay? This is an appeal case 2018-0099. There are many petitioners. Mark June, Robert Brown, Mark Morrison, Gail Morrison, Vern Davis, Ralph Warren, and Patrick Doherty. Is the petitioner present? Okay. The procedure to be followed. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The Chair shall call upon all persons intending to testify on the appeal before the board to execute the oath. The staff will present a brief outline of the appeal. Then the applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case. They reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the appellant, excuse me, to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the appeal should be granted. The board members and the staff shall then ask questions of the applicant through the Chair. The next item is the staff will then present its presentation, so the one before the appellant is just a brief introduction. Then the staff will give its presentation. On the conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the appellant may direct questions through the staff, to the staff through the Chair. Then the public hearing is open. Hearing is open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes; individuals have three minutes. The time is kept by the Secretary. The display in the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the time allowed, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board members, the staff, and the applicant, the appellant, excuse me. On the conclusion of public testimony, the staff, followed by the appellant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Chair will close the public hearing, and the matter will rest at the board. Again, any action by the board requires the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board, and the fully constituted board includes all members of the board, including vacancies, not excused for conflict of interest. So, for this appeal to be granted, you would need eight positive, or eight, five, five positive votes. Let's see. And I also wanted to point out, since there are so many petitioners, the 10 minutes applies to the group, not each person having 10. The whole group gets 10. Okay.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Do the non, do the individuals also have the right to give public comment?
Could you speak into the mic so we can hear?
Let me apologize. First of all, my name's Mark June, but my question is, as I understand, that collectively the petitioners are entitled to 10 minutes of a presentation, but do individuals still have the right to make public comment?
No.
Okay.
Not the individuals that are a part of the appellant group. All right. So, will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, Madam Chair. On September 5th, 2018, and November 2nd, 2018, the Planning Department mailed 130 public hearing notices in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code. Additionally, public hearing notices were also mailed to the Hillside, Rabbit Creek, Bear Valley, and Glen Alps Community Councils, as well as the Anchorage Community Council Center.
Is there any objection to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, anyone who is intending to testify, who is not, what is that term? Officer of the court, please come forward, and I'm going to administer the oath.
Would you like my name, or?
But you are an officer of the court?
Oh, as a member of the Plating Board.
Oh. Are you an attorney?
Are you an attorney?
Oh, I am an attorney. Yeah.
Yes, she's a.
Sorry. Didn't realize that court applied as well.
Any non-attorney wishing to testify in this case? Okay. Then, I guess we'll go on. So, from the staff, will you please present a brief outline of this appeal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appellants request an appeal of the July 23rd, 2018, Planning Director's determination, which is included in Attachment 1 of the board's packet. Pursuant to Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 14, Subsection 010, any person may request an interpretation of a term used in Title 21. On May 25th, 2018, the applicant in rezoned case 2018-0052 through council requested an interpretation of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 160D10. Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 160D10 prohibits applications for the same or substantially the same rezoning within two years of the previous application being denied. The Planning Director determined that the applicant's successive rezone applications, case number 2017-0072 and 2018-0052, did not request substantially the same rezoning. Thus, the applicant's most recent rezone, or recent request for rezone, case number 2018-0052, was not barred by the two-year waiting period. Appellants appeal that determination. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, will the applicant please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
My name again is Mark June. My name is spelt M-A-R-C-J-U-N-E.
Thank you. Please present your case.
I'd like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal. May I proceed?
You may.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak. This is a question where you're not being presented with testimony, but this is a question of law, and it concerns ordinance 2103-160D3. And by its plain meaning of its language, the ordinance establishes a bright-line rule that if a rezoning application is denied, rezoning applications seeking substantially the same rezoning are barred for a two-year period. The issues before you are, one, does the two-year rule bar rezoning application 2018-0052? And two, procedurally, did planning properly apply the ordinance? The record before you establishes the following facts in the history. The Planning Department first ignored the ordinance. When that was not possible, the Planning Department decided the issue privately through correspondence with the developer. Planning incorrectly told the zoning commission that the ordinance did not apply to the application 2018-0052 as a matter of law. Planning incorrectly failed to apply the ordinance's substantially the same test, instead applying a substantially different test. Planning refused to consider the four-year history of the rezoning application in the case, where the developer was consistently seeking to change a four-acre minimum lot size to zoning that permitted one- and two-acre lots, and then planning incorrectly told the zoning commission that the issue of quote-unquote "substantially the same," despite being a factual issue, was for the Planning Director to decide, not the zoning commission. Today, the Planning Department admits that the ordinance applies. Previously, the planning had told the commission that because there had been no appeal of a previous denial, the ordinance didn't apply. They changed that through their rescission. They never communicated that change in position to the deciding body, that is, the zoning commission. And despite the change in rescission and failing to communicate it, they still applied the incorrect test, that is, the substantially difference, the substantial difference as opposed to the substantially the same test. And no one knows. And no one knows, as we stand here today, how the change in the Planning's position would affect the decision of the zoning commission. And my points to you in these questions of law are that, one, words matter, and by that I mean that the ordinance uses the term "substantially the same rezoning application." It doesn't say "substantially the same zoning district." It says "substantially the same zoning application." And "substantially the same" acknowledges the potential for differences between one application and another. And when I say that you can— this is— this is a question of law, but I think it's fair to say that you can have applications that are both substantially the same and substantially different. And the example I would give to you is Ford consistently says its pickup trucks are substantially different from Chevy pickup trucks. And that's the point I'm trying to make, is they're both pickup trucks, and if you look at this rezoning application, it is the same rezoning application that was previously rejected. The other point I would make in terms of words matter is that if the rule only applied to repeat applications to the identical zoning district, the ordinance would have been phrased Labeling a repeat rezone application, R10, does not change the zoning history, and there is specifically Alaska Supreme Court case law interpreting the substantially the same test that says that you have to make a meaningful assessment of what happened before. In that case, that was not done, and in this case, there is a four-year history of rezoning for the purposes of decreasing lot size from four acres to one and two acres. And with respect to the R10 rezone application, the only thing we know about it is that it is for the purpose of allowing one- and two-acre lots, depending on slope. The community asked for further clarification, and there was none. The substantially same issue, once you apply the correct test, is actually a factual issue. That's not an interpretation issue, and it's a factual issue that ultimately gets decided by—if there's a dispute, gets decided by the zoning commission. And in that regard, I would note that Ordinance 2114-010 authorizes only policy interpretations, not factual findings by the Planning Director. If the Planning Director could make factual findings, there'd be no purpose in having a Planning and Zoning Commission. And I pointed out that the quote-unquote "interpretation" was not published. I think that fact acknowledges that it was improper, because if one could avoid the two-year rule by simply seeking a different label, R10 and R6, one would expect the Planning Director to publish the interpretation, so everyone—the public, the developers, and the Planning Department—would know. That sums up our position. I think in this appeal, what we are asking you to do is, one, establish the correct legal test to be the substantially same test set forth in the ordinance, not the substantially different test as applied by the Planning Department. Two, establish that the test requires a meaningful comparison to prior rezone applications. Three, establish that the test is not satisfied solely by relabeling a—the identical application under a different zoning district. And four, establish that this rezoning application, the 2018-052, is barred by the two-year waiting period of 2103-160D3. At a minimum, we believe that the change in position by the Planning Department requires a resubmission to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that there can be a decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission on a mistake-free record. Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Nothing? Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
None at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we will open the public— open the public hearing.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I believe staff has the opportunity to provide rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on— sorry. I was looking at the variance part. All right, let me go back. Appellants, please come forward, say, please, any questions, board members, questions. Then the staff, okay, sorry. Please give your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a response to the eight points of appeal that Mr. June detailed in his appeal packet. For point one, Anchorage Municipal Code does not require the Planning Director to request comments or provide notice to the public or interested parties regarding Director's determinations. The municipality is unsure who the appellant is referring to as "interested parties affected by case number 2018-0052 rezoning application." But presumably, this could be adjacent property owners or possibly any individual or group who has previously provided comments about the case. There is no Anchorage Municipal Code requirement that the Planning Director solicit further comment following developments in the re— in a rezoned case. There is no requirement to even keep a register of who may be interested or affected by a particular rezoning application. There's also no requirement under Anchorage Municipal Code, interpretations, to provide notice or an opportunity to comment when an interpretation is given by the Director. Anchorage Municipal Code states that the Director needs to provide a written response to the person requesting the interpretation within 30 days. That requirement was met in this case. For point two, the Planning Director was not required to request a rehearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. While the Planning Director's June 11, 2018, decision was resented, there's an independent basis for allowing case number 2018-0052 to proceed. Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 160D10 states that no new application for the same or substantially the same rezoning shall be accepted if a prior application was denied within two years. In this scenario, a previous application was— was denied within two years, and that'd be case 2017-0072. But the Planning Director found that case number 2017-0072 and case number 2018-0052 were not for the same or substantially the same rezoning. Because of this independent basis for review, the application was properly in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a hearing, despite the resented June 11, 2018, Planning Director decision. A rehearing based on the resented June 11, 2018, Planning Director decision was not required. For point three, the cases cited by appellant are not binding on this board, are not applicable, and thus do not require a comparison of scope, general purpose, and means. The cases cited by appellant analyze initiative and referendum petitions and corporate shareholder For point four, Anchorage Municipal Code, again Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 160D10, does not ask whether the applications are substantially the same, but rather whether the rezoning sought is substantially the same. In this case, whether the successive applications may have contained duplicative information, the rezoning sought in the second application was not substantially the same as the rezoning sought in the previous application. For point five, this point was previously addressed in point four above in the staff packet. Furthermore, the Planning Director was not required to consider case number 2014-0219 or the Conservation subdivision plating case, project number S12388. The applicant's request for a Director's determination did not ask the Planning Director to determine whether case number 2014-0219 or plating case S12388 were substantially the same for purposes of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 160D10. As these cases were not part of the Director's determination, and the sole issue on the appeal is interpretation of the Director's determination, those cases are outside the scope of this appeal. For point six, this point was previously addressed in points three, four, and five. The Planning Director's decision was based on an in-depth comparison of the different zoning classifications sought by the applicant. For appeal point seven, this point was previously addressed in point three. The Planning Director's decision was based on an in-depth comparison of different zoning classifications sought by the applicant. Appeal point eight, this point was previously addressed in point three. The scope, means, and general purpose test is inapplicable and unhelpful to the comparison of successive rezoning applications. While each successive rezoning application sought a reclassification to allow additional lots with smaller lot sizes, the Planning Director explained in detail all of the reasons why the two rezonings sought were not the same or substantially the same. And with that, the department recommends denial of this appeal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions of staff by the Okay. I actually have a couple of questions. There's— this case is quite— quite confusing. There's the—the original application, item three— no, yep, item three of our— of our packet, where we have the application as submitted with the material behind it, and those eight allegations of— of error by the applicant— by the applicants— by the appellants that you have addressed. And then there's another submittal that came in October 25th, and this one has two allegations of error. And then with the appellant's testimony, he just outlined four things that he wants to So what are we deciding?
Madam Chair, I'll let the appellant make— give an explanation of exactly what he is seeking, but to the understanding of the Planning Department, the determination that the July 23rd, 2018, Planning Director's determination was a comparison of the rezoning sought from R8 to R6 and R8 to R10. So what we are doing tonight is comparing whether or not the R6 district and the R10 district are substantially the same, and whether those rezonings are substantially the same rezoning. The Planning Department has provided an in-depth analysis of the dimensional standards and the uses allowed within the R6 district and the R10 district to show that they are substantially different zoning districts, and it goes beyond just a comparison of lot size, which is the appellant's main argument. With that, I will let the appellant address what he chooses to accomplish with tonight's meeting.
With what he chooses to accomplish, in studying this—and I did for a long time—it appeared to me that the sole issue in the appeal is the Director's interpretation of the waiting period. I mean, that's what's being appealed. That was the decision that—that she made, and this is an appeal of that decision. And all— everything else is sort of outside that scope, and I would like the testimony of the public to— because there's a lot of history here, and what is being asked for, as I understand it, is do we believe that—the—that the Director's interpretation of this waiting period for the rezone in the Planning and Zoning Case 2018-005 was And it's—it's—it's my intent that—that's how I want—that's how I want the public testimony to go. Any other questions? Any other comments? Are there any questions of staff by the appellant?
Through the chair was the change in the Planning Director's position communicated to the zoning commission for reconsideration of their opinion.
Madam Chair, that notification is not required by code.
So I take it that the answer is, is that there was—it was not communicated? Would that be fair to say? Through the chair.
I'll repeat my answer, that communication is not required by law.
Yeah, whether it was required or not, I'm trying to establish in the record whether it was done. Through the chair.
Madam Chair, I can't definitively say yes or no to that question. I—I don't, no.
Through the chair, is it true that the zoning commission made no factual finding as to whether the application was substantially the same or not substantially the same from the prior zoning applications?
That would be a part of their resolution, their findings on the case.
Or otherwise, you know, there was no discussion. The—the question for the Planning Department is to confirm that there was no discussion of the substantially the same— substantial similarities in the rezone applications. You're looking at me like I asked a bad question, and if that's the case, I'm happy to make a second attempt.
A question of staff?
Is to confirm that the zoning commission did not address the factual issue of substantial similarities between the applications. In other words, the factual predicate for the two-year bar.
You may ask staff.
Okay, that's my question to the staff through the chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I did not present that case to Planning and Zoning Commission. I cannot say whether or not that item was addressed by Planning and Zoning Commission.
Those are my questions.
Okay. All right. So the hearing is now open for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? State your name and spell it for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Becky Lipson, B-E-C-K-Y-L-I-P-S-O-N. And before my timer starts, I have a procedural question with regard to how much time I'll be allotted tonight. I work for the firm Ashburn &amp; Mason, and we represent Big Country Enterprise, LLC, which was the underlying rezone applicant, which was the party that, in fact, asked for the Director's determination in this matter. So we're not the appellant, but we are certainly an interested party, and if you're going to limit my time to three minutes, I will stick with that, but I would ask for five or 10, because what the board decides tonight is most important to us.
Okay, I'll take direction from the board. We want three minutes or five minutes? Somebody want to— Ms. Iker?
I would—I would move to request additional time for Ms. Lipson's testimony, because I'm—I'm interested in some clarity on these issues, and it—it appears from the filings that she has done some inquiry into them. Five minutes? The suggested time. I'm—I'm open to discussion, though.
Okay. Five minutes.
Okay. I appreciate the thoroughness of staff's written report and their oral presentation. Much of what I would say, they've already said, so I—I will limit myself to my five minutes and not belabor points. With regard to what Mr. June said before I begin my formal presentation, to— what the board is deciding tonight is that language on page seven of its packet, whether the Director's determination that this language, that following denial of his rezone request, no new application for the same or substantially the same rezoning shall be accepted within two years of the date of denial unless denial is made without prejudice. It's whether applying that language to this particular case before this case— It's whether applying that language to this particular case before this case got to the Planning and Zoning Board, whether that decision was correct. And so my guess is that that's why the Planning and Zoning did not rule on that matter. It's a procedural matter, and, and the case wouldn't have gotten to the Planning and Zoning Board had the Director not ruled on that. An application for an R10 rezone request is not and cannot be the same or substantially the same as an R6 rezone request. Therefore, the two-year waiting period is inapplicable. This was Director McNulty's interpretation with assistance from the Municipal's Department, Municipalities Department of Law. Pages 12 and 13 of your packet provide a very useful outline of the differences between these two zoning districts. They're very distinct. My client for background owns property that's presently zoned R8. They appeared in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2015 and again in 2017 seeking to rezone from R8 to R6. After hours of public hearings, the Commission denied recommendation in both of those cases. The benefit of having such lengthy hearings and findings as part of those past rezone efforts was that when we went back to the drawing board, we listened to the community's comments, and we listened to the Planning and Zoning Board's comments, and we determined that the most appropriate rezone in this case was an R10. And because my client wasn't trying for another R6 or an R6 with a new special limitation, we submitted an application within the two years for an R10, and staff processed that application. And this matter wasn't in fact brought, and this appeal arises from the fact that appellant... So the only reason we're here tonight is because when the appellant raised procedural objections based on the two-year denial provision of the code, that's that provision on page seven that I read to you, we requested that Director McNulty issue an interpretation in advance of the June 2018 hearing to avoid the Commission from becoming distracted in a public hearing and focus on the actual substantive issue, which was whether or not to recommend that the R10 rezone go to the Assembly. Not surprising, the Director interpreted code as not prohibiting an application for an R10 rezone as being prohibited by code. It's your job to determine, giving deference to staff, whether code means what it says and what the Planning Director with legal assistance interpreted it to mean, or what its petitioner wants it to mean, which is that any applicant who is seeking to rezone and subdivide their lot into smaller lots, potentially with smaller acreages, is automatically barred with a two-year application. And what I particularly liked in staff's report was the fact that this petitioner's request for the scope, general purpose, and means test of evaluating whether something is substantially the same or substantially different fails. The scope, purpose, and means of any two applications to rezone the same property will generally be identical. Appellant may have been able to make a stronger case had the 2018 rezone application been for an R6 zoning designation with a cap of 23 lots. In that theoretical situation, the Director may have interpreted code as triggering this two-year waiting period. However, that's not the situation before this board. This board is presented with a much easier decision, whether or not a R6 zoning application that was not recommended for approval to the Commission bars a petitioner from later requesting within that two years a new R10 request. So I would ask that the board defer to staff in this case and uphold Director McNulty's determination. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Ms. Lipson by the board? Okay. Any questions of staff? I mean, by staff, okay. Conclusion of the public testimony, is there anyone else wishing to testify in this case? Anyone else wishing to testify in case 2018-0099? Please come forward and state your name.
Yeah.
Spell it for the record, please.
My name is Burne Davis, D-A-V-I-S.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
If you testify, you will be taking part of the rebuttal time reserved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you testify as being one of the appellant's.
Yes.
You will be charged the, part of the reserved rebuttal time. You get a total of 10 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Point of order.
Yeah.
So because you're a petitioner, your time is counted, so you can time out if you want to. So if you choose to do it, you'll be timed.
No. Okay, no, I'll let you have it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, does the staff have any rebuttal? Does the applicant have any rebuttal? The appellant, excuse me.
These are questions of law, and the questions of law for you to decide is, is the substantially same test outlined in the ordinance the same as the substantially different test enunciated by the Planning Director? The other legal, the second legal question that you have is applying the substantially the same or test to the facts of this case and interpretation of the code, or is it in fact a factual finding? If it is a factual finding, it is, is it your duty to address whether it is supported by the underlying facts of the case? As a matter of law, the question before you is, can an R10 rezone potentially be substantially the same rezone application as an R6 application? If the answer to that question is yes, the Planning Director acted improperly? If the independent basis on which the Zoning Commission acted is a factual finding, should the Zoning Commission be allowed to reconsider that, their, their actions? This is not, beyond the, the questions of law, a theoretical exercise. This case does have a history of four years of consistent rezone applications seeking to lower the minimum lot size from four acres to permit one and two acres. That is the one undisputed fact that we know, and when that is the only undisputed fact, it is the same rezone application. And I think really what it comes down to is this, you expect the Planning Department to know the law, in this case, they didn't. You expect them to enforce the law, in this case, they didn't. And you expect them to get a correct interpretation of the law, and in this case, they didn't. And as a result, the public has been denied their rights. Thank you.
So at this point, we will close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Nope. I'll assign one if you don't. Ms. Hickok.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Ms. Iker. Ms. Hickok, will you speak to your motion, please?
I don't intend to support my motion. Reviewing page seven of the case packet, reviewing Ms. McNulty's memorandum, the two zonings that were reviewed are not substantially the same. An R6 zoning is not the same as an R10 zoning, and therefore I will not be supporting my motion. Thank you.
Ms. Iker.
Similar to Board Member Hickok, I also focused, do not plan to support the motion, and focused on the standard articulated on page seven, and similarly reviewed the comparisons of the various zoning districts, and do not find them same or substantially same, the same.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not intend to support the motion. My interpretation of what we're here to do tonight was review whether or not the Director had the authority under title to make the determination of substantially the same or substantially different, and I believe that the evidence that's been presented supports the conclusion that the Director did have the authority to make that interpretation, regardless of what the name of the zone is called. And that's why I'm going to vote against the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Okay, well, I'll weigh in. I too am not going to support the motion. There, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion in here about things that, that I find don't apply to what we're here for. What was being requested of us was whether the Director's interpretation of the waiting period for this rezone, whether her determination was, was correct. And if, if I go through the, the points, the eight points of error, the first point that, that the, that the Planning Director failed to request either public comment or comment from interested parties, she was not required to do that. It's, it's, it's not in the notice list. The notice list is on table 2103-1, and according to, to the code, summary of notice requirements, it's, it's not in the list, and it says unless otherwise specified in this title, procedures not listed in this table have no public notice requirements. So that for, for point one, point two, that the Planning Director failed to request a rehearing, this is not pertinent to, to this appeal. It's an appeal of her decision, not whether she requested a rehearing or not. In case, in point three, I agree with, with staff that the cases cited are, are not applicable. This scope and general purpose and means test isn't applicable. There aren't any standards for her decision, and the code does state that she has the, the right to do that, the right to make a decision. Number four, that this, that the, the Director failed to consider how the rezoning case was substantially the same as a rezoning case before, instead of considering only the requested rezoning changing from six to 10 without different, a difference without substance. Well, I, I don't, I don't believe that. I don't believe that it is a, I find that, that this, there is substance, that zoning districts are substantially different by virtue of their very existence. They have different purposes and intents and rules. Number five, that the Director failed to consider previous cases, that's, that's not, it's outside the scope of this appeal. There's only two cases to consider, and that's 2117-0072 to, to this current case, 2118-0052, from there to there. There's the two-year waiting period, whether it was applicable or not. Number six, again, outside, outside the scope of the appeal. Other cases, previous cases. And seven and eight, it just, it continues to reword the, the same allegations of error, substantially different, substantially the same. And I've addressed that, and I believe that they are substantially, substantially different. Then if we go to the 20, the October 25th, 2018 submission by the appellant, first, first point is, is that it was an improper exercise of, of, the decision was improper by the Planning Director, and, and I don't believe that. She has the, the final authority, and she did not have to publish the finding, she has to maintain a file. And then the second was, again, bringing up the, the failure to consider the previous history, which is not a part of this particular case. And so I too will not be supporting the motion. The motion has failed. And we move on to the next case. And I would like to ask, I went through, this, and this next case is a variance, and I went through the procedures for variance for the first case, and I'm wondering if there's anyone for this case, case 2018-0114, that did not hear the procedures. Did you hear the procedures when I explained?
Yes, I heard.
Okay. And you are the petitioner?
I'm the petitioner's representative.
Petitioner's representative. Okay, thank you. John Fede is the owner. Will the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice, or the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On October 25th, 2018, a total of eight public hearing notices were mailed. No comments were received from the general public, and no comments were received from the Eagle River Valley Community Council.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will you please present the case?
The petitioner is seeking approval from the board for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code, Table 2110-6, Table of Dimensional Standards, Trugat Eagle River Residential Districts. The petitioner's existing home encroaches 15.4 feet into the required 25-foot front setback, and existing shed is located entirely within the front yard setback, approximately nine feet from the front lot line. For some background, the petitioner's home was originally constructed between 1978 and 1979. MOA property, or Municipality of Anchorage, property appraisal records document various additions through 1981, and the property was rezoned to the current CER6 Low Density Residential District on June 5th, 1984. In 2002 and 2010, MOA property appraisal records show multiple In 2002 and 2010, MOA property appraisal records show multiple expansions of the building within the front yard setback. Since some additions to the home, including a shed, were constructed within the required front yard setback and do not predate zoning, the house and shed are not legal non-conforming structures and are in violation of the dimensional setbacks required by AMC 2110-050. Therefore, the petitioner is requesting a variance from those standards. For findings, the department finds that Standard A is substantially met. The lot in question is subject to extraordinary physical circumstances. The majority of the lot outside of the required 25-foot front setback contains slopes in excess of 40%. Slopes of 20% or greater are considered steep slopes in Title 21. And recognizing the constraints that often accompany lots of steep slopes, in certain cases, Title 21 allows for front setbacks to be reduced to 10 feet when slopes are in excess of 20%. In addition, the 2006 Chugak Eagle River comprehensive plan update prioritizes slopes steeper than 25% for protection and considers slopes steeper than 45% as unsuitable for development. The petitioner's home, shed, and driveway are all located on the only relatively flat portion of the lot and were constructed in a way that appears to minimize disturbance of the surrounding steep slopes. The department finds that Standard B is also substantially met. Given the extraordinary physical circumstances caused by steep slopes, strict application of the dimensional standards in AMC 2110-05 would create an exceptional hardship. And the petitioner's home is similarly sized when compared to homes in the same zoning district in the immediate area. The department finds that Standard C is substantially met. The topography of the lot is not self-imposed and results in constraints that transcend mere inconvenience. The department finds that Standard D is substantially met. Adjacent property is not adversely affected. The department finds Standard E is substantially met. The requested variance is dimensional and will not allow prohibited use, nor would change the character of the zoning district as a whole. Standard F is substantially met. There are no identified health or safety issues. Standard G is substantially met. This does not apply to detached, single-family residences. Finally, Standard H is substantially met. The required 25-foot front yard setback encompasses a significant portion of the relatively flat portion of the lot, and the petitioner is requesting the minimum variance that would allow the existing structures to remain in place. With that said, the department finds that all standards are substantially met and therefore recommends approval of this variance, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the, of, to, of the staff by the board? No? Okay, any questions of the staff by the applicant? No? Okay. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state, and spell your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Mike McLean. I'm an associate broker with Jack White Real Estate, and I'm John Thede's representative. And my name is spelled M-C-L-A-N-E.
Thank you. Please present your case.
I am a friend of John's, and he asked me to come out and help him get his home prepared to market. And my former occupation was a registered land surveyor years ago and an engineer, so my first request was to get an updated ASBILT survey. And that opened up this ongoing quest that started about seven, eight months ago where we went through the request for non-conforming use, which was denied. And it was just interesting going through the history of the, the house that Jack built as this thing was added on to vertically to capture these spectacular views. But unfortunately, the, the last addition that John put on took place after zoning went into place. And it's, was the urban lore up there that since they were in the country, he didn't really need to get a permit, according to his neighbors. And I had to be the bearer of bad news for the last seven months as we went through this whole process. So I, I went to the extra effort to get the contour map done, to overlay on the ASBILT survey, so it really, the picture sort of says a thousand words. And so we just hope that you folks will concur with staff that this is a legitimate request. And thanks for your efforts.
Are there any questions of Mr. McLean by the board? Any questions of Mr. McLean by the staff?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this case? Anyone else wishing to testify in case 2018-0114? Okay, seeing none. You do have quite a bit of time for rebuttal. I don't know what you're going to rebut, but you can. Would you care to use any of that?
No.
He indicates not. So we'll close the public hearing and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe.
Motion to approve the variance in case 2018-0114, including staff comments.
Seconded by Ms. Hickok. Would you speak to your motion, please, Mr. Smythe?
I agree completely with staff's review of this. I think that on point A, that there are exceptional physical circumstances in the lot. I think they've met B, considering undue hardship. In C, that it was not entirely self-imposed, considering the topography, that it doesn't adversely affect the adjacent properties, does not change the character of the current zoning, and does not, F, does not affect the health and safety or welfare of the neighborhood, G doesn't affect ADA, and then finally that it, that it is apparently the minimum variance is, would be allowed.
Ms. Hickok. I intend to support my motion. I concur with Mr., Commissioner Smythe's findings. The topography along this parcel is significant. And I find that the findings noted on pages three through five are substantially met.
Anybody else? Mr. Ayers.
Just to clarify, I do intend to support the motion. I think that we should specify that, want to follow the department's recommendations on page five in the packet.
So noted. Anything else? Anyone else? If not, please vote. I don't know why I asked a vote. I could have asked for objection, but I didn't.
When you see staff comments other than your recommendations, you're supposed to vote.
Okay, that was my practice.
Well, good. Okay, so that's the end of the public hearings. No reports. Board member comments?
Through the chair, I'd like to mention there are no cases for January, but we will hold the meeting anyway to approve these resolutions and get them going, okay? It'll be brief. Thank you.
Yeah, if anybody knows anybody for sure. Ms. Hiker.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.